Good evening, everyone, and welcome. I'd like to call this meeting to order. Joining me in the council chamber is our clerk, Miss Defoe, Deputy Clerk, Mr. Bantock, C A O, Ms. Thompson, and our Director of Corporate Services, Ms. Kruger. And if you would join me in a silent moment of silent reflection. Thank you. Before we move into item number two, I'm going to ask. Bring some greetings.
Thank you, your worship. And if I could ask Director of Community Services, Tim Wolf, to pop on the screen. It is my pleasure this evening to welcome and introduce to you, Tim Wolf, Director of Community Services. Today is Tim's first day with the city of Stratford in his new position, and we look forward to working with Tim. Tim has previously been employed with the city of Waterloo, city of Kitchener, town of St. Mary's, and previously with the city of Stratford. So, welcome back, Tim.
Well, thanks, John. And through your mayor of Ritzman Council, I'm looking forward to working with everyone. And it's a great city and a lot of pride to be here. And a big reason I want to come back is this was a city that got my roots in and happy to be here again.
Once again, Tim, on behalf of the residents of Stratford staff and council, we're fortunate to have you in. Welcome. Thank you.
Thank you.
Ms. Defoe, the meeting is yours.
Through you, your worship, item two is declarations of beginner interest. Are there any declarations? And if so, please state the general nature thereof.
Seeing none.
Item three is adoption of the minutes, and there is a motion that the minutes, the special meeting dated December 7th, 2022, and the regular meetings dated December 12th and December 19th, 2022 of Council of the Corporation of the City of Stratford be adopted as printed.
Move by. Thank you, Counselor Burbak, and seconded. Thank you, Counselor Hunter. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item four is adoption of the addendum, and there's no addendum to be adopted. So moving to item five, report of the Committee of the Hole in Camera Session. Just prior to today's regular council meeting, a committee of the whole in camera session was held to consider the following items. Item 3.1, 2022 Accessibility Advisory Committee Applications. Item 3.2, 2022 Active Transportation Advisory Committee Applications. Item 3.3, 2022 Board of Park Management Applications. Item 3.4, 2022 Committee of Adjustment Applications. Item 3.5, 2022 Communities and Bloom Advisory Committee Applications. Item 3.6, 2022 Energy and Environment Committee Applications. Item 3.7, 2022 Heritage Stratford Applications. Item 3.8, 2022 Stratford's of the World Ontario Committee Applications. Item 3.9, 2022 Stratford Police Services Board Applications. And item 310, which was 2022 Stratford Public Library Board Applications. All 10 items were considered under the personal matters about identifiable individuals, including municipal employees or local board employees exemption under the municipal act. And at the in-camera session, no direction was given on any of the 10 items.
Thank you.
Moving to item six, hearings of deputations and presentations. Item 6.1 is a request for delegation by the Alzheimer Society here on Perth. And there is a motion that the delegation by Aaron Dale and Teresa Weicher on behalf of the Alzheimer Society here on Perth be heard.
A mover for such, Counselor Beatty will move second by Counselor McKay. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you. And we'll bring Miss Dale and Miss Weicher into the meeting. Hello. Good evening. Good evening, ladies, and welcome. And the floor is yours. Go ahead.
Thank you very much for having us this evening. On behalf of the Alzheimer Society here on Perth, we would like to speak with you this evening about January Alzheimer Awareness Month, as well as some of our upcoming fundraising events. Firstly, we do have a bunch of Alzheimer awareness events happening within the community. One of them being with partnership with Lights On Stratford. And we have awareness materials that will be out there as well as donation machines that are as part of that event. We also have a photography exhibit that is being held at the North Perth Public Library currently, and it will move to the Stratford Public Library on January the 20th. And that features some photography that clients of ours have taken, and they were taught that by one of our summer students. We also will be at the Stratford Library, as well as many other area libraries on our library tour. And we will be talking about dementia resources that are available through the Alzheimer Society, as well as available to ask or to answer any questions that people may have about Alzheimer's disease or other dementias, or what other services that we do offer. One of our other big events that is coming up on January 20th, 24th, we are going to have a talk with the doc. So Dr. Alexandra Peel, who is our local geriatrician, will be joining us over Zoom at 1:30 that day to talk about different topics, including driving cessation, medications, what's new in that field. And she'll be answering questions as well. One of the other things that we have going on is our memory and aging program. So if you are concerned about your memory, then this is a program for you. It's on Zoom for this winter, and that will be held on Tuesdays from January 31st to February 21st. And it's a two-hour program. There is a small fee to that program, and that's $25 just to cover the cost of the books. So if anyone is interested in any of those programs or any other education that we may have, you're welcome to visit our website, www-alzheimer.ca/pirthcounty. And you would be able to find any of that information, as well as register for any of that, those educations or any other ones. I would like to hand it over to Teresa to speak about our upcoming Supes On.
Thank you, everyone. Good evening. So I'm here to chat a little bit about Supes On. So I know that most of you from the Stratford and Perth area, you've probably heard of our annual Supes On event. So we're excited to say that we're back in person this year for our 28th Annual Supes On Event. The last couple of years with COVID, we've had to pivot to online options. And last year, we did a Supes On Trail, so we're super excited to be back at the Stratford Rotary Complex this Saturday from 11 till 2. I know that I'll see a few of you there as a few of you are volunteering with us that day. Also, one's being a judge that day. Mayor Ritzma will be joining us again. Super excited to have you. So this event for us is typically Perth's largest event with the Alzheimer Society. Prior to our unification, it was the event that we always relied on most for the funding to support our programs and our education. So we rely on 45% of our annual budget comes from fundraising, and this is one of our largest events. So we're hoping that we have a large turnout. We've got a kids' corner, a silent auction. We've got live music. We've got 26 vendors from around Perth County, and we have many different sponsors from within the community and area. So we're super excited for the event. Any questions about our event or about awareness that's happening in the month of January?
Anything from council? Just for Warren Council, if you're in attendance, you'll be buying 50/50 tickets. That's for sure for myself. So having said that, though, thank you to both of you for your work and your team's work and your volunteers' work on a daily basis with your clients, the individuals that you work with. And thank you for bringing awareness during the month of January to this disease. So thank you ever so much, and we look forward to Supes On, that's for sure.
Thank you. Thank you for having us this evening.
Thank you.
Through you, worship. Item 6.2 is a request for delegation by Cameron Moffett. And there is a motion that the delegation by Cameron Moffett regarding an encroachment application for 166 to 194 Ontario Street be heard.
A mover for such. Thank you, Counselor Burbak, and then seconded by Counselor Hunter. I think I saw your hand. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous, and we'll connect Mr. Moffett to the meeting.
Thank you all for your time. Seeing the report on the encroachment application and council and staff in favor of it. Available later tonight when, if there's any questions. I can respond to those for the parking in front of the 194 Plaza. Nothing further than the council or the staff report.
Thank you, Mr. Moffett, and we'll have, if we do have questions, council will bring those forward when we get to the item 7.2 on the agenda this evening. Thank you very much.
Thank you.
Thank you. And moving on.
Through you, worship. Item 6.3 is a request for delegation by Jordan Underhill. And there is a motion that the delegation by Jordan Underhill on behalf of the Canadian Dairy Expo with regard to CBX parking requests in 2023 to 2025 be heard.
Move by. Thank you, Counselor Beatty, and seconded. Thank you, Counselor Nigel. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you, and I'll wait for Mr. Underhill to come on board into the meeting. There we go. Welcome, and the floor is yours, Kate and Jordan. Make sure you're unmuted.
Try this again. Good evening, Council, Mayor Ritzma, and City of Stratford staff. I'm Jordan Underhill, and sitting beside me here is Kate Mellonbacher, our Operations Manager for the Canadian Dairy Expo. And we wanted to do a two-part presentation here, and we'll make it snappy and quick. One, just a quick summary of the event itself, because I know there's a lot of new council members. And then just quickly getting into a parking plan for the upcoming Dairy Expo, which is April 5 and 6. Of course, we've been off for three years, so ourselves and the dairy industry are extremely excited to get back together. It's vital that dairy producers in these times get back and get access to innovation and education and reconnect with each other after being on the farm for three years here somewhat isolated. So we're excited that we're celebrating our 10th year here in Stratford, and we'll be going into our eighth operating year here in 2023. We can go to the next slide. So again, the dates, April 5 and 6, there's an aerial of the show when it's in operation, showing various parking, which is kind of altered through the years as we've had allocated space, you know, south of the complex. McCarthy Road, you can see it here in this aerial. It's a good problem to have and also a challenging problem to have. We have 16,000 dairymen coming two days from across the country, across Canada, from the east coast to the west. And we have exhibiting companies from 32 different countries that all arrive at the same time that week, that first week of April. So it's, like I said, parking is both a good problem to have that people are attending, but also a challenge in terms of the capacity. Next. About five years ago, returning council members will probably remember that we had a company from Western Canada come to the show and do an extensive economic impact study on the show, showing both the impact on Perth County, the province, and the country. And the first thing I said when I saw these numbers were, wow, that's like substantial. How is that even possible? And of course, these numbers also include the companies at the show that are exhibiting within Perth County, within the province, and within the country, and their sales activity that's generated at the show and as a result of the show. So if you look at the equipment at the show, there's lots of half a million dollar, two million dollar equipment. And so those numbers add up pretty quickly. But of course, it also includes restaurant impacts, hotel impacts, shopping impacts, et cetera, which there's no question, go beyond Perth County. We have companies staying in Waterloo now in Woodstock because we do max out what the city capacities are. Some of the community groups that we work hard to partner with and include in the show as fundraising opportunities for them. 4H and Junior Farmers actually handle all of the food on site. We're serving the dairy commodity. They're raising funds from that retail activity. That Stratford Agricultural Society does our breakfast both mornings. We feed 800 producers before the show even starts. The Rotary Club has helped us, has been kind enough to help us with parking over the years, which is sometimes a cold job, depending on the temperature, but it's been great to have them involved. BIA is a newer, very active member. And we're working with them in terms of not only them helping on site and our donation to that group, but also how we get more people from the show downtown and stimulating some economic impact there, which is important, of course, for them after going through what we have in the last three years. The Children's Hospital is brand new. For 2023, we're actually going to be hosting, it's called Cows for a Cause. It's a dairy farmer that single-handedly has raised $100,000 over the last two years for the Children's Hospital because he had a son that has basically lived at the Children's Hospital for almost two years here now, and called us and said, would you host the sale and can you help us expand it and make it a bigger fundraiser? So that's happening at the show this year, and we're pretty excited in terms of that opportunity to give back further. Next. So this is kind of the meat and potatoes of what we're asking for, and I won't read it verbatim, but I'll just kind of summarize here. So essentially, what we're asking for is parking allowance on McCarthy Road, which is required because we max out the existing asphalt parking at the Rotary Complex. Of course, we're utilizing all of the buildings plus the Cal Coliseum structure that we built at the south end. And we're also going to be utilizing the field, which we've done some preparation work around, which is directly west of the facility. But we're definitely going to need McCarthy Road as well. So this is a proven concept that we utilize for four years now, up until COVID hit. And essentially, we're angle parking cars on one side of McCarthy Road, which is the north side, from the fire station, which would be close to Moreington, all the way to the end of McCarthy Road, the far west, the far west end. The parking takes place over two days only, which is the operating days of the show, Wednesday and Thursday. And we're only parking between a two-hour window between 7 and 9. So essentially, what we're doing is we're parking, we're parking the exhibiting companies on McCarthy Road before the show starts to allow the attending farmers, which are coming in again from across the country, to park close to the facility in the main asphalt parking and then overflow into the field. We utilize shuttles to move people efficiently off the road. We utilize City of Stratford Police. We utilize barricades to make sure that we're barricading off entrances and exits to the retirement community centers on the road, the fire station, et cetera. And then we actually have a security company that we've hired that specializes in parking and also assists us with that. Up until this point, and again, I just circled back and double-checked with City of Stratford Fire Police and also bylaw, we have not had any major complaints or issues, which knock on one wood, which is pretty exceptional considering the number of cars we parked. The alternative, if you go back to 2013, when the show started, we had, we did not have proper parking capacity. Again, we didn't know what kind of numbers the show would draw. So for the first two years, we maxed out parking, and we had cars parking on side streets, blocking fire exits, blocking residents' driveways. And I'm sure that the mayor's phone and council's phone were ringing off the hook. Once we got control and knew what our capacities were, then we developed this plan, which we have multiple onsite meetings with our parking team to make sure that we execute it safely and efficiently. So we're essentially asking for what we've done in the past. We're asking for a three-year allowance for this year, 2023, 2024, and 2025, just to be efficient about it, so we don't have to come back each year to ask for the same thing. And again, it's a proven concept. The departments are heavily involved, and it's a way for us to handle. And also make sure that we're accommodating the people coming to Stratford. So it's kind of a joint effort in terms of, you know, welcoming these people to Stratford between the Dairy Expo and the city. And you guys have been great in helping us with that. As far as the cost of executing this parking, the costs are all taken on by the Dairy Expo. So there's no direct cost to the city in terms of extra police, et cetera, signage, et cetera. We execute and handle those associated costs. Next. Just a quick map that kind of shows that the parking area that we're talking about. So if you look on the right-hand side, that and that turnaround, that's actually right at the fire station. So the chief, Paradise, the fire chief, is nice enough to allow our shuttles to turn in their lot. And we basically start just west of the fire station. And then that's where we start in the morning angle parking, and then we continue on all the way to the far west end, which is, as you know, a dead end of McCarthy Road. And then once that's full, then we open up the main gates to the asphalt parking at the Rotary Complex. And then from there, we'll go to the field just west. So we park approximately, the show is about 450 cars angled parked on the north side of McCarthy Road. And of course, McCarthy has a bike lane on both sides, on the north and south. So it's kind of extra wide. And so when we're angle parking on the north side, it still allows for two lanes of traffic in behind those cars parked on the north side. And of course, we're not obstructing the sidewalk in any way either. Next. So this just shows kind of the parking areas, again, the three different parking areas, just a summary. McCarthy Road and then the main complex. And then you can see that that field there directly west. So what we did on that field was we actually cut the grass and mowed down the weeds that were there. And then we used organic corn stalks. I think it was 180 bales that we spread on that field to create a base to park on here in April. And then obviously, we'll monitor the weather as we lead into the show in April. Next. And that's pretty much it from us. Council, you guys will all receive a welcome package from the Dairy Expo with passes to the show. I know it's heavily geared towards dairy farmers. But the one night, which is the first night of the show, April the 5th, we have Cheese Fest, which is a totally free event that we welcome, not only council, but the whole community of Stratford to attend. We have live entertainment, cheese sampling. That's our big Children's Hospital fundraiser is that night. And everybody's welcome to attend that evening function called Cheese Fest.
Thank you, Jordan, and thank you, Kate. And we will look at this item as we move through. It'll come up under 7.3 on the agenda this evening. Counselor Henderson.
To you, you're the mayor. I have a question. So you're saying the exhibitors will park there from 7 till 9? And where do they go after them?
So we're stopping. So we park from 7 till 9, and then, so I'm just talking about the parking activity. And the shuttle's running up and down the road is only between 7 and 9, and then those cars all leave at 4 o'clock when the show closes. But we're not, we don't have any parking activity happening there after 9, but there are cars there until 4 o'clock.
So the exhibitors come, drop off their stuff, and then they go park on the road? Is that how it happens?
Correct.
And then they basically stay there all day?
So yes, we have a drop-off. I mean, the exhibitors move in two days before the show. For last-minute items that they bring in, we have a circular drop-off where they can drive into the complex and drop stuff off, and then they go back and park on the road. And then, yeah, correct, those cars will be there until the show ends at 4 o'clock.
And then you're probably aware, there's a new subdivision that went in on the west end. So there'll be two extra driveways down there. So that'll be a couple less parking spots. Just, I'm not sure if you're aware of that or not, because that wasn't there two years ago.
Yeah, no, it's amazing that the development expansion, and we have a lot of respect for that. We understand the tax input into the city, and we're in constant communication with them. We're not constant, but regular communication with those developers, both south of the complex and then also west of the complex, just to make sure that they know what we're doing and basically be good neighbors like the farmers that we are.
Well, just through the mayor, I just want to say, congratulations on being able to open up again. I know a lot of people enjoy going there because there's certainly a lot of people there. And it's excellent that you've chosen Stratford to showcase this. Thank you.
Thank you. Counselor McKay, I saw your hand.
Through the mayor, I was just wondering, is it restricted as far as the movement of those cars after 9 a.m. until 4, just for safety reasons, or the people moving in and out of those parking spaces on an ongoing basis during the day?
So that's a good question. And so our security team is out there monitoring that after 9, of course, after most of the parking is done. And there's very little movement because the exhibitors that come in the morning are there for the day. For the most part, there is a few cases where they have to leave, and so that security team helps them back out and get out of those spaces. I would say that there's maybe 5 to 10% of those cars will move throughout the day before 4 o'clock, but it's minimal.
Just as a follow-up, so if they are leaving, they are being helped to back out and traffic was.
Yeah.
Thanks.
And then we also hear City of Stratford Police that are at the main entrance and then also at Moreington and McCarthy. And then there's also a car that goes up and down McCarthy as well during the day.
Thank you. Anything further from council? Thank you very much, Kate and Jordan. Look forward to the event. Thank you. Adam Clark.
Through you, worship. Item seven is orders of the day, and item 7.1 is a resolution regarding the airport study progress presentation. The first motion listed on the agenda is that the delegation by Ben Crooks on behalf of H M Arrow Inc. regarding the Stratford Airport Study Progress be heard.
Move by. Thank you, Counselor Beatty, seconded by Counselor McCabe. All in favor? Opposed of any, and that's unanimous. Thank you, and we'll bring Ben Crooks into the meeting.
Your worship, would you like me to do a quick introduction?
You can, if you wish. Go right ahead.
Through your worship, H M Arrow Inc. is an aviation consulting firm based out of Ottawa. H M Arrow is currently conducting the 2022 Approved Sustainability Study on the Stratford Municipal Airport. This study is due to be completed and presented to city council in the spring of 2023. This evening, Mr. Ben Crooks, an aviation planner with H M Arrow, will provide city council with a mid-project progress report. Welcome, Ben, and over to you for your presentation.
Thank you, chief. Appreciate it. Go ahead, Ben.
Thank you very much, your worship, and for the introduction, Chief Paradise. Just as my slides get pulled up here by the city clerk, and thanks in advance for that. I certainly appreciate having the opportunity to be here before council, before city staff, and before the members of the community who are reviewing the presentation or the council meeting tonight as well. And as introduced, my intent tonight is to give a mid-project progress presentation on the Stratford Municipal Airport Study. So covering the work that we've done to date and where we'll be heading in the coming weeks and months here. If we do the next slide, please. Just a brief introduction of our team before we get started here. So H M Arrow Incorporated, we are a smaller airport consulting firm. We're a team of five full-time professionals, mainly working in the planning, engineering, regulatory, and advisory services roles. We've experienced across Canada in eight provinces and territories and over 100 projects at this firm, in addition to all of our past experiences at previous firms. And when it comes to Stratford, I'll say that this is a very familiar airport size for us. And when it comes to Stratford, I'll say that this is a very familiar airport size for us. And we mainly work with smaller regional and community airports across Canada. And then sort of the broader region examples of that would be Godrich and Tilsenberg, Niagara, SC Catherine's in Sarnia. So Stratford Airport is a very familiar size to us. It's very much the niche in which we operate. And you know, when we came into this project as a as a consulting firm and as a team here, we had three main priorities, and I just wanted to share those with council tonight. First and foremost, we really want to emphasize meaningful and comprehensive stakeholder and community engagement. And I'll bring that up a few times throughout the presentation tonight, but we came in with our ears open to to get the perspectives of those that have a vested interest in the airport, knowledge of the region, and sort of have that boots in the ground expertise. Our second priority here is transparent analysis. So we didn't come in with a predetermined outcome or objective that we were striving towards, but instead, we want to ensure that our study speaks for itself in terms of the data that we present and the analysis that we go through to, you know, culminate in our recommendations to Stratford City Council. And our final priority here is creating a study that's built on actionable and pragmatic recommendations. So essentially, we want to create a consulting report that, when completed, it'll be a tool, it'll be a usable item that can serve the city staff well and the council well in their governing function for the airport. Next slide, please. Now, the context surrounding the study is likely familiar to to most of council, but I'll work through a few of the key steps in the past few years that have brought us to where we are today. So back in twenty fifteen, the city worked with the University of Waterloo School of Planning, a student team there to complete an economic impact study for the airport, taking a very quantitative focus on the economic output in terms of labor and earnings and have added GDP to the region from the airport. And twenty twenty-one, the airport was studied again, this time through the City Service Delivery Review that was commissioned by the City of Stratford by Black Line Consulting. With respect to the airport, that state looked to opportunities to increase the the rates and fees environment of the airport, optimize its sort of operating model and costs, and also considered alternative features for the airport, including its potential sale. Now, with respect to our current state that we're working on today, again, from January to April of last year, so about a year ago now, there is the consideration of the scope of the study by the previous term of City Council that flowed into the request for proposals process from July to August. And again, that culminated in the award of the contract to our team in October twenty twenty-two. Since that point, we've been working quite quite extensively with Chief Paradis and the airport manager as well. I've had a project initiation meeting and early November, we came down on site and and did our airport inspection, got a feel for the infrastructure, and again, a boots in the ground, look at the airport. And we've been moving quite steadily through stakeholder engagement interviews over the last several months, and I'll talk about more of that in the following slide here. Again, where we are today is, of course, with the update presentation to City Council and the the upcoming launch of community engagement activities. Next slide, please. Now, just to emphasize really the core objective, the core purpose for why our team was retained and what the study is all about. And this is an excerpt from the the RFP that our team responded to. And again, the intent here is to carry a review of the airport on whether it can be a financially sustainable asset. So the airport currently is operated as a municipal service, similar to other, you know, parts of the city of Stratford's delivery to its residents. Based on budget values, twenty twenty-two would have an estimated operating cost or or tax for a deficit of the airport of a hundred and eighty-five thousand dollars. At twenty twenty-three, that's budgeted to go down slightly to about a expensive around a hundred and sixty-seven thousand dollars. But again, with the operation of the airport as a municipal service, really, the question that we're trying to ask with the study is essentially, is the city getting a good return on its investment in these operating costs based on the economic role that the airport serves, based on the social benefits realized by residents of Stratford and the surrounding region? And sort of the the spin-off impacts that come from its availability and operation. And if that's the question of where we are today, the follow-on question is, are there opportunities that are out there to increase its operating revenues and control its costs to make it a financially self-sustaining asset? So again, minimizing the the tax-supported burden of the airport to the municipality. Now, I will say that we can, I mentioned earlier, we have a fair bit of experience working with smaller regional and community airports across Canada and in Ontario as well. This isn't an uncommon question for municipalities to be asking, just in the last several years in Southern Ontario, Owen Sound, Wyerton, Wingham, Cornwall. These municipalities that own smaller airports, similar to Stratford, are going down similar exercises to see, again, what are the benefits they they gain from their airports? And do they justify the the operating and the capital costs associated with them? So it's by no means an uncommon question in the the airport sector nowadays. And we'll go to the next slide, please. Now, this sort of flow chart here captures what we've been working on for the past few months and where we'll be going in the the weeks and months that'll follow. And again, I talked about what we've been doing to date so far on a previous slide, but again, we've really been focused over the past few weeks, months on gaining a comprehensive understanding of the existing conditions of the airport. So we came in to learn and really glean all the information we can about the history of the airport, the role that serves today, what kind of activities are happening on site and its performance. And concurrent to that, we've been working quite extensively on stakeholder engagement interviews. Now, the stakeholder engagement component of our work is quite crucial. And what we've been doing is through a series of one-on-one meetings or group sessions or focus groups, we've been able to engage about twenty-three individuals representing eighteen different stakeholder organizations. And I'll go through those in the following slide here. Now, if that brings us to where we are today in January, the the blue cells there show where we're going. So into January and February, we'll be looking at the the long-term financial sustainability of the airport and doing a twenty-year pro forma model. I'll be looking at it sort of strategic alignment or how it, you know, matches the priorities of the municipality and its residents. And again, as mentioned at the outset here, we're targeting the completion of our work in in the kind of the second quarter of twenty twenty-three, around April and May. So those early spring months there. And next slide, please. Now, this slide here overviews the the three pillars that are going to underlie the study that we're eventually going to bring forward to city staff and city council that'll sort of be the culmination of our work here. And we're structuring our approach to this in sort of three parts or three pillars. First off, we're going to clearly lay out the baseline conditions of the airport or where Stratford Airport is today in twenty twenty-three. That's going to include a profile of the airport, so a description of its users, its tenants, businesses, activity levels, a social and economic impact assessment. So clearly enumerating whether by, you know, numerical metrics or sort of more qualitative descriptions of what's happening. You know, what are the benefits of having Stratford Airport today? And also completing a benchmarking analysis and, you know, comparing Stratford to three similar airports in Southern Ontario and saying, you know, is it performing well? Is it performing comparably? Are there opportunities for learning and from improvement from those different efforts? And part of the airport profile as well will be getting a sense of the the baseline greenhouse gas emissions that come from its operation. So again, taking a climate lens to the airport and seeing how it contributes to the broader emissions of Stratford in the region. Once we have that baseline condition set nailed down, we're going to move into part two, and that's looking to the future and seeing what opportunities are there out there to increase the revenues of the airport through either the growth of current activities or businesses, or the attraction of new types of activity that will have direct revenue impacts. With that, and future assumptions about operating costs and capital costs, we'll prepare a long-term financial model that'll help us get a sense of in the future, if the airport continues to not be a financially self-sustaining asset. And really, that flows us into our third pillar or our third part here, which is establishing a recommendation for the future path for the airport. So we'll take the consideration of the future financial impacts or financial requirements of the airport and compare those to the municipal strategic priorities, the perspectives that are shared by residents through the community engagement process. And based on those different factors there, make a recommendation to City Council on what its future strategy with the airport should be. And I mentioned at the outset, we don't have a predetermined view of what that should be yet. But we expect it'll come through the analysis and and data collection process. And whatever that recommendation is, we'll lay out an accompanying implementation strategy for how to move forward. Next slide, please. And now I've mentioned the importance of stakeholder and community engagement a few times, and the slide will go into a bit more depth than that here. So I mentioned that we had spent most of November and December and a bit of January going through detailed stakeholder engagement interviews, and we've had a very positive uptake from the stakeholder organizations that we've reached out to on those. In total, we've engaged about eighteen different organizations across across the region. Those are listed on the right side of your screen there, and we break those into three main categories. So first of all, we have the State of Stratford, the Township and Perth Counties, the three main governmental entities either involved in the airport or sort of geographically situated with it. Our second category was airport users, so the businesses located on site, the operators, and entities that use it on sort of a transient basis, like Hydro One, the provincial police, the Air Force. And our third category of stakeholders were what we deem to be regional stakeholders. So those are groups or organizations that may not directly use the airport, but they have sort of a macro level view of the regional economy or trends that affect Stratford. And good examples of that would be Invest Stratford, Destination Stratford, and the Festival. We include the hospital and the paramedic service, again, given the interrelationships with air ambulance missions at the airport, and also a few other groups that again could contextualize the the current position of the airport. Now, that very much sums up the the stakeholder engagement piece. And what we'll really be focusing on in the next month, month and a half or so is the community engagement piece. So we want to get a really good set of data from the residents of Stratford and from the surrounding region about how the airport influences them and what their perspectives are on in the airport, its economic and its social roles, and their support for its costs and its overall future. We'll be working closely with City of Stratford staff over the next week or so to develop an online community engagement portal through Engage Stratford. What that's going to have is a comprehensive set of background data residents can review to get up to speed on the airport if they aren't as familiar with it. And also a run a ten-question engagement survey to, again, gauge individual perspectives on the airport and its future. Our intent is for that community engagement program to launch hopefully next week, next Monday is what we're targeting for, so January sixteenth. And for that platform to be available for about four weeks until, I think it's Friday, February tenth, and we'll be working closely with the city to get that advertised and make sure that residents are aware that, you know, their perspectives need to be heard in this project and are certainly of value. And next slide, please. So bringing that all together here on our next steps, I talked about community engagement, and that's really our our main focus over the next few weeks here. Parallel and sort of concurrent with that, we'll be working on the parts two and three of the study and our core analysis over the next few months here with the objective of finalizing the study and bring it to city staff and later to city council in April or May. And and really what that flows into is the long-term choices to be made by Stratford City Council as the governing body for the airport on its future. Again, we'll bring forward recommendations, but ultimately lies with council on what the the future path they choose is. And next slide, please. So again, very appreciative of having the opportunity to come before City Council tonight. We've had a really enjoyable time with this project so far, and we're happy with where it's going. And we hopefully will be able to bring forward a report in a few months that will be well-received at council and will assist you in your your progressive municipal government's role and also your oversight of the airport. And if there's any questions or comments, I am more than happy to take them.
Thank you, Mr. Crooks. Any questions from council? Counsel Spurback, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Through the mayor, just had a question about the stakeholders that you've interviewed. I'm just curious if any other municipalities besides Perth East and Perth County itself had any interest in or, you know, would be interested in being approached for use of the airport, because there are at least there are six local municipalities around us that that could possibly be interested. So I'm just curious if if anyone has thought about reaching out to them.
Thank you for your question, counselor. And again, as you mentioned, of course, we have engaged with city staff, the township of Perth East, and with that choice being because the airport is situated in that municipality in Perth County for their sort of macro level economic development focus. I think that's a comment that perhaps we can take back for discussions with with Chief Paradis in our next project update meeting and and see if that's an opportunity that we can explore.
Thank you. Anything further? Seeing none, thank you again for the update. We look forward to to meeting with you again and for the the fulsome results of your study. So thank you very much.
Thank you. Looking forward to it.
Through you, your worship. The second motion listed on your agenda for this item is a staff recommendation that the report titled Airport Study Progress Presentation be received for information.
Thank you. Moved by Counselor Henderson, seconded by Counselor Beatty. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Item seven point two is a resolution regarding an encroachment application, and there is a staff recommendation that the encroachment application for one sixty-six to one ninety-four Ontario Street to permit the existing parking spaces to encroach onto the Ontario Street Road Allowance be approved, that the annual fee of five thousand three hundred and sixty dollars and seventy-nine cents adjusted yearly by the CPI be added to the property tax bill, and that a bylaw authorizing the encroachment be considered at the January ninth regular council meeting.
Move by. Thank you, Counsel Spurback, seconded by Counselor Bean. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Item seven point three is a resolution regarding CDX parking requests, and there is a staff recommendation that permission for temporary angle parking on the north side McCarthy Road West from the fire hall to the most westerly driveway of the Rotary Complex for the Canadian Dairy Expo in twenty twenty-three be granted, that the organizer develops an alternate off-site parking plan, the twenty twenty-four and twenty twenty-five Canadian Dairy Expo events, that all costs associated with event parking be the responsibility of the Canadian Dairy Expo, and that approval of hosting this event is subject to there being no provincial COVID nineteen restrictions or HPPH guidance regarding large events.
Mover for that item? Thank you, Counselor Beatty, and seconded by Counselor Niger. Discussion. Counselor Beatty, and then Counsel Spurback.
Yes, I I support this staff recommendation. I I believe that this goes without saying, but I I'm certain that following that the event, the the event organizer and staff would would have an opportunity to circle back and review how the event went. And if there was any questions, comments, or concerns, that that would be brought forward and addressed with council for future consideration.
Yeah, I'm looking to our C A O, and there's definitely an acknowledgement of that. Thank you, Counselor Beatty. Counsel Spurback.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I just wanted to make a couple of comments. One is I'm really not thrilled with the angled parking along McCarthy just because of the safety concerns. I know that they were talking about having people there, help the security agents or whatever. I just, I don't think it's terribly safe for cars, but also people who are parking. I understand there's going to be a shuttle. But there are stretches along McCarthy where there's no sidewalk. So if they didn't understand where to get to the shuttle or how to get to it, that we're mixing pedestrians on the road with cars, with bikes. There's concerns about bike lanes not being available. We do have a lot more residents in that area. It is a route to the high school, so that those bike lanes are used by students. So with angled parking and people backing out, it's just, it it concerns me. And I'm really glad to see that there's the development, the organizer developing an off-site parking plan for next year. But I'm I'm just, I guess this question might be for staff, that the way it's phrased, it says that the organizer develops an alternate off-site parking plan. So does that mean it's just an alternate in case this one doesn't work out? Or does that mean we're going to be doing something different next year so that we can avoid some of these problems? And just a comment about the off-site parking, there are other events that have off-site parking that would rent or use a parking lot that's located elsewhere in Stratford and then just use a shuttle service. So I don't see it being that much different, except that making sure the parking is in a parking lot is much safer than having parking on the road. So I guess my question would be, what exactly does it mean? Are we requiring this organization to have off-site parking next year? Is, I guess.
Thank you for the question. I'll look to see if Mr. Hackett is is available to respond to that. Or Mr. Wolf, Director Wolf. There's, go ahead, Mark.
Okay, yes. Good evening, Mayor and Council. Yes, my recommendation for the development of off-site parking would be for the organizer after the twenty twenty-three CDX to come up with an alternative plan that they could use for an off-site parking location and then shuttle those patrons to the Rotary Complex from that parking site. That would that would be due to the the safety concerns that Counselor Burbak has just mentioned as well. And if if council only approved this request for for one year.
Thank you.
That's a follow-up.
Follow-up, go ahead, Counsel.
Yeah, I just wanted to thank you for that. And it's, I do think it's important to note that the last time that this organization came forward, we did mention that we would like to see an alternate parking plan, and and yet they're coming before us without one. So I really would like to ensure that next year that there really will be an alternate parking plan and that we're not going to go There really will be an alternate parking plan and that we're not going to go through this exercise again next year. Thank you.
Counsel Hunter, I saw your hand. Thank you, Counsel Burbak and then, um, Briscoe, Counsel Briscoe to follow and seven.
Thank you, your worship. Uh, I, I had reached out to Mr. Hackett after, uh, uh, reviewing our, our, uh, materials for tonight. And I had wondered, uh, about the possibility of using the Downey Street Lot, uh, because this event takes place in. Early April, uh, during the weekday, uh, weekdays, I, I. I don't know what the volume of bicycle traffic is, but, but, uh, and, and Mr. Hackett suggested that, uh. Uh, he couldn't answer directly about the use of the Downey Street Lot, but, but perhaps that's something that could be looked at, um. And, and I think it would fill two, um, needs. One was getting more people to the downtown area. So while they're here, they pass by our lovely restaurants and shops and, and, uh, perhaps pop in and spend some money there. Uh, and the other I wondered about was whether part of McCarthy could be used for parallel parking and, uh, and, um. Uh, because I, this is an event, I, I think that's good for the city and I'd like to accommodate as much as possible. Uh, obviously we have a, a responsibility to, to do so safely, but, um. Uh, I, I'd like to see if we can find creative solutions and work with this group and, uh. Anyway, that, that was my comment and, uh, perhaps, uh, as we proceed, working with them in the future, uh, those could be considered.
Thank you, Counsel Hunter, Counsel Briscoe, seven, and then McCabe. Go ahead, Counsel Briscoe.
Thank you, um, through your worship, uh, to Counsel Burbak's point about the, it being a high school route. Um, in the presentation, they'd mentioned that parking would stop at nine with limited movement. Is there a way to ask them to? Adjust that window that there's, that parking must be done by eight and that there's to be no movement between eight or nine and then another blockout window between three and four. To ensure safety when, or dependent if that needs maybe two to three. I'm not quite sure with the time the. High schools get out, but just to, um, kind of have blockout periods to protect for that.
Mr. Hackett, I'll give it back to you.
Um, I, I think that's a question we'd have to loop in the organizer of the event, um, as far as answering specifics to, uh, you know, the timeframe. Um, seven to nine has generally been their, their time, as, as Jordan Underhill had mentioned, uh, regarding when, um, exhibitors. Would, would load in and then, and then move to the parking, um, areas on McCarthy, uh, Road. Um, so I think we'd have to work with him on, on possible, uh, adjustments to that time. Um, facility hours, the facility is open at six o'clock AM. So it, you know, it is something that their potential from our side that we could make happen as long as it would, uh, would work from the, uh, CDX organizer side.
Thank you, Counsel Briscoe, Counsel Seven, and then, uh, Counsel McCabe.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I just had two questions. My first one is, um. I'm assuming that the, the south, the bike lane on the south side of the, the street, um. I'm just wondering if that would still be an option for drive, for cyclists or if that is going to be part of the. The south driving lane. And then I did have, uh, one more question, um, after that, I could.
So I'll go back to, uh, to. Mr. Hackett on that one and then we'll have you with the follow-up. Okay, Conan? Thank you.
Worship, I can answer that question. Just, uh, had to look at it today. Unfortunately, the south bike lane would need to be closed as well. I don't think there's enough, uh, spatial requirements to, to make it, uh, make it work, so.
Thank you. And a follow-up, Counsel Seven?
Great, thank you. And I was just wondering, um. The, the presentation, uh, from the organizer mentioned there was little to no, um. Concern or not concern, but incidents or, or safety issues that had happened. I'm just wondering if, um. I don't know if Ms. Thompson would speak to if there's been a, any reported sort of incidents or accidents or safety concerns that have been noted by, by. Either side, um, with this kind of parking on McCarthy particularly.
Ms. Thompson.
Um, thank you through you, your worship. Um, I cannot speak to any, um, reported incidents. Um, it is important to have the police. There, but, um, we can go back through the debriefing of, um, previous events. And consider the, uh, any information there and see if police are able to advise us, um, with respect to, uh, the parking. I will state that, you know, as, as noted, um, in the presentation, in the first couple of years, there were a lot of concerns because, um, of the volume of. Of cars that were involved. Um, the parking does evolve, um, we, and as issues come up, we, um, try to come up with solutions. Um, in consultation with the organizers to address those concerns. Um, but as I said, you have a large number of vehicles all converging in the same location, um. McCarthy Road is not, uh, through street yet, um, but there is additional development and additional, uh, residents in the area. So. This is why, um, in the pre-planning, um, we involve the stakeholders of police, fire to do our best to ensure safety. Uh, but this will come out after the, the debriefings, um, from this event as we move forward in looking at. What the alternate off-site parking plan will be for future years.
Thank you.
Counsel McCabe.
Through the mayor, I would also echo Counsel Hunter's ideas regarding. Locating maybe the shuttles into the downtown core, uh, in previous years as a, as a business owner in the downtown. Or I would say that sometimes we are completely unaware of the Dairy Expo. Uh, that it isn't, uh, having the kind of impact on the downtown core, but could be a benefit to see. Uh, parking coming or, or a shuttle coming out of the downtown core that benefits also, uh, the businesses there.
Thank you, Counsel McCabe. Anything further? Counsel Briscoe.
Thank you, um, through your worship. Just a question, if, uh, it wasn't covered in the presentation, but if. They, organizers provided any contingency plans for the field, um, because that's expected to hold six hundred and fifty cars, um, but if there's. A torrential rain or something that makes that inaccessible, that's a substantial amount of cars to be relocated. Have they provided any contingency on that and? Will, um, streets kind of sign no parking be posted in the residential areas to, um, avoid any, um, kind of miss parking?
Thank you, Mr. Hackett.
Uh, yes, as the organizer had stated, uh, in his presentation, they've done some prep work of that, um, of that field location. Um, on the development of the northwest, um, side of the facility. Um, but as you say, you know, that's obviously going to be dependent on, um, on the weather. Um, this would be the first year that that location has, uh, you know, potentially been used for parking. Um, but to answer your question, no contingency has been provided if that area is not, uh, available for parking.
Anything further? Counsel Nigel, go ahead.
Uh, just a quick, uh, through your, through you, Mayor, uh, is there any risks, uh, for the emergency vehicles passing through there if there was a need?
Mr. Hackett or Mr. Briscoe? There's chief, go ahead, um, Chief Parity.
Through your worship, uh, good question. Uh, no, there won't be, there won't be any risk. That, that's why all the police, uh, whether on duty or off duty. Or the paid staff that, uh, that Mr. Andre Hill has on scene, uh, they'll be directed as part of their duties. Of any incident or any emergency service vehicles coming through, uh, to already have everything, uh, made safe and cleared as we come through.
Thank you, chief. Anything further? Seeing none, the, the item has been moved in second and, and if there's no further discussion, I will call the question. All those in favor. Opposed if any? And to oppose, and that's Carrie. Thank you.
Through you, your worship. Item seven point four is a proclamation request regarding winter pride days. And there is a motion that Stratford City Council hereby proclaim February ninth to twelve, two thousand and twenty-three. As winter pride days in the city of Stratford and that the rainbow pride flag be flown at Stratford City Hall on February ninth to twelve.
Thank you. Moved by Counsel Burbak, second by Counsel McCabe. Thank you. Any questions or comments? Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven point five is a resolution regarding the Porsche Boulevard Water Main Extension Tender Award. And there is a staff recommendation that the tender T dash twenty twenty-two dash nineteen. For the Porsche Boulevard Water Main Extension Project be awarded to Burnham Excavating Limited. At a total tender price of a hundred and fifty-seven thousand, four hundred and sixty-nine dollars and eighty-four cents, including H S T. And that the mayor and clerk or their respective delegates be authorized to sign the necessary contract agreement.
Thank you. A mover for this item. Thank you, Counsel Burbak, second by. Thank you, Counsel Niger. Any questions or comments? Counsel Hunter, go ahead, please.
Thank you, worship. I, I have a, through you, I have a question for either Mr. Sheldon or Mr. Crinklaugh. Uh, wh- when I see a proposal where a bid is substantially lower, uh, than the others, it does, um, raise some issue. Uh, and I note that, that the, um, recommended contractor worked with the city on the Queen Street Extension. Uh, so I, I have two questions. Uh, in, in this case, the, the, uh, uh, price is eighteen percent lower than the next lowest bid. So I have, I have two questions related to that. And, uh, uh, perhaps I can put both on the table at once and, and then wait for the answer. Uh, the first is, uh, am I safe in assuming that the city is satisfied with the quality of the work from this contractor on the previous project? The second question is, uh, were there any extra charges on that project? Uh, and if so, uh, did the total price, uh, still come in below the, the next highest or the next lowest bid? Uh, those are my questions.
Mr. Sheldon, go ahead.
Through your worship. So the first question, um. During the Queen Street project, we were satisfied with the contractor and. Very large project, much larger than the scope of this one. And the second part, uh, was there any additional costs? Uh, there was additional costs. But they were mainly related to minor scope changes and not necessarily claims for additional compensation for the original scope. Um, and regardless, they were still, after the scope changes, they were still less than the second lowest bidder. Um, but again, it's not fair to compare that, uh, because the scope changes aren't dependent on which, like, which contractor was selected. The scope changes are based on, uh, field conditions and, uh, things that we decide as we're constructing.
Thank you. Anything further? And thank you, uh, Mr. Sheldon. If there's nothing further, I'll call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven point six is a resolution regarding the Anne Hathaway Daycare Center fee decrease and there is a staff recommendation that schedule D of the city's fees and charges by law. One twenty-eight dash two thousand and twenty-two as amended, be further amended to establish the fees as noted on the agenda effective January first, twenty twenty-three. Twenty twenty-three for the Anne Hathaway Daycare Center.
Mover. Thank you, Counsel Henderson. Will move in second by Counsel Briscoe. Any comments or questions? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven point seven is a resolution regarding a temporary borrowing bylaw and there is a staff recommendation that the report of the manager of revenue and taxation dated January ninth. Regarding temporary borrowing bylaw for twenty twenty-three be received. And that council authorize a bylaw for temporary borrowing from time to time to meet current expenditures during the fiscal period ending December thirty-first, twenty twenty-three.
Thank you. Move by. Thank you, Counsel Hunter, second by Counsel Niger. Questions, comments, Counsel Seven, go ahead, please.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I did have a question, um, if we could have some clarification about the difference, um. Changes in limits or anything from this year, um, to the previous years.
Thank you. Uh, I'll turn it over to Director Kruger.
Thank you through the mayor. Um, there haven't been any significant changes in the limits. There was some, um, in our previous bylaw. Um, the limits were stated differently from what the financial institution had for us. So it's just a correction for that, uh, to update that.
Anything for the Counsel Seven?
No, thank you.
Thank you. Anything further? It's been moved in second at all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven point eight is correspondence regarding the Order of Canada. And as noted on the agenda, Stratford resident Jean Acheson has been named to the Order of Canada for her leadership of global humanitarian medical missions. And her longstanding devotion to helping those in need. Ms. Acheson leads the Stratford Mission Depot, an organization that collects donations of used medical supplies and equipment. And arranges for delivery to people in need around the world through groups, organizations and individuals planning mission trips. Since its creation in nineteen sixty-seven, the Order of Canada has honored more than seven thousand, six hundred Canadians whose service has shaped our society. Whose innovations have ignited our imagination and whose compassion has been, been united for our communities and this is provided for the information of council.
Thank you, Mr. Fo. And if I, if I could add as well, we are, uh, so thankful for the work of, of, uh, Jean Acheson in our area and the impact it has. Globally and, and to that end, I know she's received a, a wonderful award, uh, through, through the order, but. On behalf of the city, we will present her as well with her, a certificate that reads the City of Stratford Office of the Mayor. On behalf of the City of Stratford, I am pleased to congratulate Jean Acheson. Appointment to the Order of Canada in recognition. Of your extraordinary leadership and global humanitarian contribution, uh, signed by the mayor. So. Uh, Jean, if you're listening, congratulations. And I know she was just so thrilled with this honor and, uh. So on behalf of all of us, uh, congratulations. Thank you.
Through you, your worship. Item seven point nine is a resolution regarding appointments to the Stratford Public Library Board. And there is a staff recommendation that direction be given on the appointment of ten citizen representatives to the Stratford Public Library Board of Directors. For a four-year term to November fourteenth, two thousand and twenty-six, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council. And through your worship, if I may, um, as the remaining items listed under orders of the day are appointments to various advisory committees and local boards. Of the city of Stratford, I just wanted to note that council can choose to fill the vacancies. Um, you can choose to fill only some, you can defer consideration of a report to a future meeting, you could refer a report back to staff. Um, as noted, you can amend the terms of reference to appoint, um, extra individuals, uh, if you wish, and I'm happy to answer any questions as we move through these various reports for you.
Thank you, Ms. Defoe. So we're looking at item. Uh, seven point nine with regards to the appointment to the Stratford Public Library. Counsel Burbak, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I'd like to, uh, recommend or make a motion that the following people would be appointed to the library board. Uh, Kim Bardwell, Lori Brown, Philip Conley, Michael Corbett. Mackenzie Kipfer, Caitlin Cockney. Daniel, or sorry, David McKay, Emma Perrin. Amid Condrey and Chris Zonville, Zondaville.
Thank you, Counsel Burbak, and a seconder for that. Thank you, Counsel McCabe will second. Comments, questions? Discussion. Counsel Seven and then Counsel Hunter, go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I was just wondering on, uh, some background. I know that typically the, the library board. Has recommendations. I'm just wondering if this is, um, something that has taken up upon the board's own initiative. Each, uh, time there's nominations to the board or is this something that's part of their, um. I can't think of the word, but part of their, their policy for the board.
I'll go to the clerk for this item.
Uh, through you, worship. I did see the chief administrative officer's hand. Maybe I'll defer to her first.
Thank you. Go ahead, Ms. Thompson.
Thank you through you, uh, your worship. Um, in response to the question, um, there, um, the library, um. Is governed by the Public Libraries Act, so it is a different, uh, piece of legislation that governs the public library and the boards. Um, they do have the ability to, uh, recommend, um, members to the board. It is still up to council to accept that recommendation, to amend it, um, or, or, or make other decisions. This is, um, one of the rare, uh, outside boards that has this ability. Uh, most other ones are governed by the municipal act and are subject to council, uh, discretion as to the appointments.
Follow-up, Counsel Seven?
No, thank you very much.
Thank you. And did I see another hand? Counsel Hunter, I believe I saw yours. Go ahead.
Yeah, uh, with apologies, your worship, I, I have a question for, uh, Counselor Burbak. Uh, I was a little behind in reading my list. Is, is that recommendation the, or, or is the motion to, uh, appoint the recommended members?
Yes, through the mayor. Yes, I read the list recommended by the library board. Sorry, didn't add that at the beginning.
We could ask that through the clerk as well. And I I giving a head nod from the clerk. Yes. Thank you. Any other questions? Seeing none, I will call the question on on the appointments to the Stratford Public Board twenty twenty two to twenty twenty six. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Through your worship, item seven ten is a resolution regarding proposed amendment to the Communities and Bloom Advisory Committee's Terms of Reference and Appointments. And there is a staff recommendation that the Terms of Reference for the Communities and Bloom Advisory Committee be amended to reduce the number of citizen appointments from six members to five. That direction be given on whether to appoint a member of council to act as an alternate to the mayor on the Communities and Bloom Advisory Committee. And that direction be given on the appointment of two citizen representatives to the Communities and Bloom Advisory Committee for a two-year term to November thirtieth, two thousand and twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Counselor Brady, I see your hand. Go ahead.
I would, excuse me, I'd like to move the staff recommendation of the Terms of Reference. Further, I would like to seek your acceptance that Counselor Henderson represent you as the council rep on the Communities and Bloom. And further, that Barb Hacking and Cindy Carlson be appointed for the two-year term.
I'm just looking to the clerk if she has those items as listed by Counselor BD. Thank you. A second for such. Thank you, Counselor Burbak. Discussion? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you very much.
Item seven eleven is a resolution regarding appointments to the downtown Stratford Business Improvement Area Board of Directors. And there is a staff recommendation that direction be given to the clerk to readvertise the available positions on the downtown Stratford Business Improvement Area Board of Directors in January twenty twenty three.
Moved by Counselor Seven. Second by Counselor Henderson. Thank you. All in favor. I'm sorry. Are there questions on that? I'm sorry. Any questions? Counselor Burbak, I'm sorry.
Thank you. Through the mayor. Yeah, I did have a question about this. So there were four applicants that were would be qualified for the five positions. So I'm wondering, do those applications stand? And then you're you're going to advertise for the one remaining available spot? I don't quite understand how that how this is working.
Miss Dayfo, go ahead.
So through you, your worship. Yes. So the individuals who have currently applied, their applications would remain. We would advertise in order to fulfill the remaining positions and then take all of those applications to a future council meeting for council's consideration.
Follow up, Counselor Burbak?
Yeah. I guess I was just a little bit confused by why the the four people's names didn't come forward at tonight's meeting. But I guess that they're not there, so we can't vote on them. But yeah, I yeah, I guess I don't have a follow up. Thanks.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Go ahead.
How are they going to run the board right now? If there's no new members or the current ones just going to stay on until till council points new ones?
Miss Dayfo, go ahead.
Through your worship. Yes. So as outlined in the report, the current members of the board can continue to serve as the board until successors are appointed. That provision is also included in our procedural bylaw.
Counselor Burbak.
Thank you. Yeah, I did remember what my follow up question was. I'm just curious as to the timing because I think some of these people did apply quite a while ago. So are we gonna let them know that that they have to reapply? That's my one question. And the second question is, are we sure that the people who are currently on the BIA are able to to continue? And I'm wondering about how fast this is going to happen.
Miss Dayfo.
So through your trip, as noted previously, the applicants who've submitted an application do not need to reapply. Their applications remain with us on file and will be listed for consideration once this matter comes back. The intent is to advertise for the remaining positions immediately so that we can prepare another report for council, either seeking direction to appoint members to the board or alternative options that may need to be considered by the council in case we don't receive a sufficient number of applications for the spots that are currently available.
Anything further? Seeing none, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Through your worship, item seven twelve is a resolution regarding the Stratford Town and Gown Advisory Committee. And there is a staff recommendation that the Stratford Town and Gown Advisory Committee be paused for the twenty twenty three calendar year, that the clerk be directed to discuss with representatives of the University of Waterloo Stratford Campus and the Stratford Chef School, whether there remains a need and interest in the Stratford Town and Gown Advisory Committee, and that a report be brought back to council in the fourth quarter of twenty twenty three outlining potential next steps for this committee.
Mover for the staff recommendation? Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Second by Counselor Niger. Questions and comments? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven thirteen is a resolution regarding twenty twenty two appointments to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee. And there is a staff recommendation that direction be given on the appointment of two citizen representatives to the Active Transportation Advisory Committee for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Staff direction to staff. Thank you, Counselor Burbak. Go ahead.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I'd like to make a motion to recommend the appointment of Ian Morton and John Lewis for the ATAC Committee.
And a second for that. Counselor Seven, thank you. Discussion? Counselor Burbak, go ahead.
Yeah, through the mayor, I just was wondering about the there is a Avon Trail representative position that's going unfilled. So I'm wondering if we can have the city clerk readvertise that position so that we might find somebody to fill that spot.
I'm looking to the clerk and she's giving me a head nod. Yes, thank you very much, Counselor Burbak.
Thank you.
So that item's been moved and seconded. All in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous.
Through your worship, I don't know if Counselor Niger's handed up or if his screen is.
I'm sorry, Counselor Niger, go ahead.
He might be frozen.
Oh, you are frozen. You are just just frozen there for a moment. Thank you.
My apologies, your worship.
No worries. Go ahead.
Item seven fourteen is a resolution regarding citizen appointments to the Board of Park Management. And there is a staff recommendation that direction be given on the appointment of six citizen representatives to the Board of Park Management for a four-year term to November fourteenth, twenty twenty six, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Staff recommendation for this board? Counselor Hunter, go ahead.
Thank you, worship. I know that we have six people to appoint to that board. And as there are six applications, I would move that we accept all six candidates to fill that position.
Thank you. A seconder, Counselor Henderson. Is that a second? Thank you. Thank you. Discussion? On the recommendation, the motion, seeing none, all in favor? Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven fifteen is a resolution regarding twenty twenty two appointments to the Energy and Environment Committee. And there is a staff recommendation that staff be directed to readvertise the remaining vacant youth representative position on the Energy and Environment Committee. That direction be given on the appointment of four citizen representatives to the Energy and Environment Committee for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council. That direction be given on the appointment of a civic beautification and environmental awareness representative to the Energy and Environment Committee for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council. And that direction be given on the appointment of an Avon River Environment Association representative to the Energy and Environment Committee for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Thank you, Counselor BD. Go ahead.
Thank you, your worship. I would like to make the following motion that Craig Merkley be appointed as the area representative, that Vaunee Azano be appointed as a civic beautification environmental awareness committee representative, that Ken Clark, Justine Nigro, and Ian Morton be the citizens appointed.
A second for that. Thank you, Counselor Niger. Discussion? Counselor Hunter.
Thank you, worship. Perhaps a question for the clerk. I note that one of the applicants in particular, Ian Morton, had applied and and we've appointed him to the Active Transportation Committee. Was there any indication about whether Mr. Morton was willing to serve on two separate boards? Or or whether it was an application to to be involved and and whichever one was was accepted was what they were looking for? I don't know if there's any information on that.
I'll turn to the clerk. Thank you.
So through worship, I can't answer it directly. However, what I can say is that when members of the public are asked to submit applications expressing their interest, we ask them to submit individual applications to each of the boards. So it is likely there is an interest in both. However, I would need to reach out and confirm that in order to confirm that intent.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
I've sat in Energy and Environment Committee for many years, and we actually have to appoint a rep to be on ATAC. So it might be working out that we could maybe, oh, no, that's not going to work. I just realized that. Anyway, I was just thinking he could be the ATAC rep. But anyway.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Counselor Seven, I see your hand.
Thank you. Through the mayor, I I would like to put forward an amendment to also appoint Sharon Collingwood as a citizen representative.
A second for that amendment. Counselor McCabe, thank you. Discussion with regards to that amendment? If not, we'll vote on the amendment. All in favor? Opposed, if any? And that's carried. So there is an amended motion on the floor. And I will call the question on the amended motion. All in favor? Opposed, if any, that's unanimous. Thank you.
Through your worship, item seven sixteen is a resolution regarding twenty twenty two appointments to Heritage Stratford. And there is staff recommendation that staff be directed to readvertise the remaining two vacant citizen representative positions on Heritage Stratford. That direction be given on the appointment of two citizen representatives Heritage Stratford for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council. And that direction be given on the appointment of a Stratford Area Builders Association Alternative Representative Heritage Stratford for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Staff recommendation coming from council? Thank you, Counselor McCabe. Go ahead.
I would motion to accept the staff recommendation and that Barb Cottle and Andy Mechanic be appointed to the Heritage Stratford Board as citizen representatives and Jack West as the Saba representative.
A second for that. Thank you, Counselor Bean. Just looking to the clerk if she's okay with that. Okay, I know I'm moving along fairly quickly. I apologize. So that's been moved in second. If there's no discussion, questions? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. Opposed, if any? And that's carried. Thank you very much.
Item seven seventeen is a resolution regarding twenty twenty two appointments to the Stratfords of the World Ontario Advisory Committee. And there is a staff recommendation that direction be given on the appointment of six citizen representatives to the Stratfords of the World Ontario Advisory Committee for a two-year term to November thirtieth, twenty twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
I would like to make a motion that we accept everybody that applied. So that would mean we'd have to adjust our bylaw to allow one more citizen. And the reason for that for this term is because we'll be hosting the Stratfords of the world, and they're going to need all the help they can get.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. A second for that motion. Thank you, Counselor Briscoe. And I look, see the clerk has her hand. Go ahead.
Through your worship, may I just clarify with Counselor Henderson and Counselor Briscoe? The intent is to amend the Terms of Reference for the Stratfords of the World Ontario Committee to increase the number of citizen representatives appointed.
That's that's right.
Thank you. And Counselor Briscoe as well. Thank you very much. Thank you for that clarification, Miss Dayfo. Anything further? Seeing none, I will call the question all in favor. Opposed, if any, is Counselor Hunter frozen? I believe so. And that's carried.
Through you, your worship. Item seven eighteen is a resolution regarding twenty twenty two appointments to the Committee of Adjustment. And there is a staff recommendation that direction be given on the appointment of five citizen representatives to the Committee of Adjustment for a four-year term to November fourteenth, twenty twenty six, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Motion for direction. Counselor Briscoe, go ahead.
Thank you. After your worship, I moved to accept the motion and would put forward that AJ Mishra, Charlene Gordon, Justine Negro, Nigro, Andy Mechanic, and Peter G. Morton be appointed.
A second for that. Thank you, Counselor Hunter. And I'm just looking to the clerk if you do have the names recorded. Thank you. So that's been moved and seconded. If there's no discussion, I'll call the question all in favor. Opposed, if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you.
Item seven nineteen is a resolution regarding appointments to the Stratford Police Services Board. And there is a staff recommendation that direction be given on the appointment of one community representative position to the Stratford Police Services Board of Directors for a four-year term to November fourteenth, twenty twenty six, or until a successor is appointed by Stratford City Council.
Counselor Seven, I see your hand. Go ahead.
Thank you. I'd like to make a motion that Dave Gaffney, David Gaffney be appointed.
A second for that motion. Thank you, Counselor Bean. Discussion. Counselor Henderson, I see your hand.
So the province has two people on the board. Do they take the names of the people that applied to be what who they appoint? And if so, should we nominate them tonight? Do we know the answer to that tonight?
We do know the answer, and that was sent out before the meeting, but I'll turn it over to the C O for clarification.
Thank you. Through you, your worship. We did look into this. So the the two provincial appointees are a separate process from city council, and the province has their own separate application process. Individuals must apply through that process. So council does not have the ability to recommend to the province for those provincial appointments. Citizens must appoint directly to the provincials through the provincial process.
Follow up, Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
Now, the people that apply then, are they given that information? Because, well, I didn't know that before, and I'm wondering how many people actually know that. Is it a possibility that we could notify them by email or whatever to tell them about that and give them a link to the application process?
Turn to the C O or the clerk. I see your hand. Go ahead.
Through worship, may I clarify? Are you referring to any of the individuals who've submitted an application for the community representative position? Yeah, so we could certainly provide them with additional information about that opportunity and a link to the application. Absolutely.
Thank you very much, through the mayor, though. Appreciate that.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. So there is a motion on the floor to appoint Dave Gaffney. So there is a motion on the floor to appoint Dave Gaffney to the police board. If there's no further discussion, I will call the question. All in favor? Post? And that's Carrie.
Item seven twenty is a resolution regarding proposed amendment to the Accessibility Advisory Committee's Terms of Reference and Appointment. And there's a staff recommendation that the Terms of Reference for the Accessibility Advisory Committee be amended to reduce the number of local agency representatives from two members to one. And to increase the number of citizen representatives from eight to nine, that direction be given on the appointment of four citizen representatives to the Accessibility Advisory Committee for a two year term to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council. And that direction be given on the appointment of one local agency representative to the Accessibility Advisory Committee for a two year term to November thirtieth, two thousand twenty four, or until successors are appointed by Stratford City Council.
Thank you. Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
I'd like to make a motion. We have some.
Counselor Henderson, you are muted accidentally.
Thank you. I'm not sure what you heard, so. I'd like to make a motion for the Accessibility Committee, and as as there's many new councils on. On council right now, I just wanted to let you know that the committee prefers to have people that actually have accessibility needs. Or are accessible themselves, or know a lot about it. So here's the recommendation I'm gonna make. Is that Jamie Pritchard, Diane Sims, Roger Ford, Jeff Crowder, and Heather Kontus are appointed.
And I'm just looking to the clerk at this stage, do we need the the staff recommendation or to include the staff recommendation with regards to the Terms of Reference? If would you be?
I meant that all of it to be there. I just mentioned.
Thank you. Thank you. A second for that. Thank you, Counselor Henderson. A seconder for that. Thank you, Counselor Burbak. Any discussion, questions? Counselor Hunter, go ahead.
Was was there a, oh, through your worship, a question for the clerk? Is is there a requirement that members of that committee? Be accessibility trained, or is or is that just a recommendation?
Madame Defoe?
Through your worship, so for the Accessibility Advisory Committee, there is a requirement that majority of the members be persons with disabilities. With respect to required training, it is staff's recommendation that all of our advisory committee members and local boards, as applicable, receive. Accessibility training that is a broader requirement under the customer service standard of the AODA. As noted in all of the various reports, we're also gonna be expanding that training to include our code of conduct and other procedural items as well.
Counselor Henderson, go ahead.
Yes, through your worship, I just wanted to say that if anyone on my. Committee, since I'm curious, having a problem doing that, I'm gonna work with them to get it done.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. So there is a motion on the floor to to the proposed amend amendment to the accessible. Accessibility Advisory Committee's Terms of Reference and the appointments. If there's no further questions or comments, I will call the question. All in favor? Opposed if any? One opposed? And that's Carrie. Thank you.
Through worship, I see Counselor Burbak's hand.
Thank you, Counsel. Thank you. Go ahead, Counselor Burbak.
Thank you, through the mayor. I just had a question about. Seven point one nine, the appointment to the Stratford Police Services Board. I must, I might have missed something, or people's screens might have frozen, but when I saw the vote, I only saw five people voting for the motion. And I didn't see. I only saw three opposed, so I'm a little confused if people didn't vote, or is it? And maybe the clerk can clarify.
I can go back to the clerk on that.
So through your worship, it's my understanding that the mayor called the question, and I identified the item as being carried. However, a member of council could ask for the vote to be retaken.
I would appreciate that. I will maybe do it a little slower this time so we can see. Sorry.
I thought I had six, Counselor Burbak, but my apologies. So.
I might have missed somebody. Sorry.
So we're going back to item seven point one nine with regards to the Stratford Police Services Board. Appointment for two thousand twenty two to two thousand twenty six. I will call the question. All in favor? Please leave your hand up. I, okay, somebody's hand moved there. So leave them up, please. Just put your hand up. All in favor. One, two, three, four, five. Six and opposed? One, two. Three. And I'm missing one. Counselor Wardofa, did you vote in favor of? Yes, okay, so there's your six. Okay, so that is carried.
Through your worship, item eight is business, which previous notice has been given, and there's none scheduled. So moving to item nine, reports with standing committees, there are no standing committee reports to be considered at the January ninth, two thousand twenty three meeting. Moving to item ten, notice of intent. Item ten point one is notice of a public meeting under the municipal act. Stratford City Council will hold a public meeting on Monday, January sixteenth at six P M electronically to hear all interested persons with respect to amendments proposed to the Business Licensing Bylaw. One eighty seven dash two thousand four. The purpose of the amendment is to increase the minimum commercial general liability requirement from two million to five million, and that such requirements should apply to all business license types covered under the bylaw. Members of the public can review the notice, which was attached to the agenda for more information, including how to participate in the meeting.
Thank you.
Item ten point two is a notice of motion. At the January twenty third regular council meeting, Counselor Seven intends to put forward the following motion for consideration. That as part of the procedural bylaw review, staff include options for the publishing of agendas seven days prior to meetings. That a review of and possible alternatives to the current three step decision making process be included. And that options be included for alternative and more efficient ways for recorded votes to be made, as well as permitting recorded votes at in camera meetings.
Thank you.
Item eleven is reading of the bylaws, and there are six bylaws listed for consideration as follows. Item eleven point one is to repeal bylaw one sixty seven dash two thousand and twenty one. Item eleven point two is the temporary borrowing bylaw. Item eleven point three is to award the tender for the Portia Boulevard Water Main Extension. Item eleven point four is the appointments of council members to subcommittee standing committees, advisory committees, boards, and agencies, and citizens to advisory committees and boards. And I would just note, there was an error where it had indicated that Counselor Henderson was being appointed to the Person Stratford Museum, and that actually should be Counselor McCabe, so we will be making that amendment. We will also be filling in the blanks with all of the direction given this evening for the citizen appointments. Item eleven point five is to amend the fees and charges by law regarding the Anne Hathaway Daycare Center. And item eleven point six is the Accroachment Agreement for one sixty six to one ninety four Ontario Street. These bylaws can be taken collectively upon unanimous vote of council present.
So a motion to take items. Eleven point one to eleven point six collectively moved by Counselor Henderson, second by Counselor BD. Discussion. Seeing none, all in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. We're moving on to the first and second reading. Move by. Thank you, Counselor Burbak, seconded by Counselor McCabe. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. Thank you, Counselor Niger, and the third and final. Moved by Counselor McCabe, seconded by Counselor Hunter. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous.
Item twelve is the consent agenda. Are there any items listed on the consent agenda to be considered by council?
Seeing none?
Item thirteen is new business. Are there any new business items?
Counselor McCabe, go ahead.
I just wanted to take the time to recognize here the passing of a very important member of the community here over the course of the holidays, Joe Mandel, who. Started the Church Restaurant, which was an incredibly important part of the development of Stratford. I know that. Many people are quite saddened by this passing. Joe was an incredible force in a community, really that second. Wave of the tourism industry where the Church Restaurant, the Old Prune, and. Rundles put Stratford on the map as a culinary destination. I know that he will be incredibly missed by the people here without him, that kind of innovation. That Stratford is known for. He was a real giant in that way, a giant man, somebody I knew very well personally, an incredible supporter of the. Restaurant industry here. He will be missed, and I thought I should bring that to everyone's attention here.
Thank you, Counselor McCabe. We appreciate that. Counselor Henderson.
I just wanted to start off our first meeting in the new year by saying Happy New Year to everybody and Happy New Year to everyone in the city. And I think it's gonna be a great year. I'm looking forward to working with the new counselors and. Already I'm hearing great ideas, and it's gonna be very exciting, and. And we've got new staff, and yes, things are looking great for our city, and I just want to give another little shout out to lights on Stratford. Our destination Stratford, which used to be called Tourism, is doing a fantastic job of. Of fixing things up in our cities through tourism dollars by, you know, the accessible washroom. Above the boathouse, which is gonna be open all year round, and the lights that he's brought to the city, you know, you see the pictures and. Everybody's got smiles on their face, and it's it's just great, you know. Look forward to more things coming from the tourism office. He really is on the ball looking at things. That's everything.
Thank you, Counselor Henderson. Love the positive comments. Thank you. Anything else from council? Seeing none. I believe our last item or second last item, I guess I should say. Is our confirmatory bylaw and. Motion for first and second reading of eleven point seven, the confirmatory bylaw. Thank you, Counselor BD, seconded by Counselor Burbak. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. And the third and final. Counselor Seven will move seconded by Counselor Bean. Thank you. All in favor? Opposed if any, and that's unanimous. And once again, just to echo some of the comments here, great work tonight. We. And I want to thank those individuals that put their names forward for the the different committees that that we serve as council members and as citizen representatives. So thank you very much to those individuals. So having said that, motion to adjourn. Thank you, Counselor Burbak, and then seconded by Counselor Niger. Thank you, all in favor? Opposed if any, and we're adjourned. Good night, everyone.